All right, here we'll come down to this. This is the Rules and Government Relations Committee meeting of, I don't know, what's the date? The 19th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, six p.m.
October, right.
Yeah.
On the end there.
So, we...
Did we approve the amendments last night?
We didn't because we had gotten them like a couple hours before.
Can't approve the other...
Yeah, we couldn't approve those ones. Yeah.
I move that we approve the amendments to April 2nd and September 13th.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye. Cool. So...
I will get the rule resolution once I get away with it. The video was not linked on the website, so I had to get Jim to get the video.
Oh, yeah, totally.
It's gonna be rather concise.
We talked, we voted, it's over.
Yeah.
That's even better.
Yeah.
Cool. So, yeah, let's talk about this whole thing.
Make your case, counsel.
Yeah, well, I was sort of looking at how this for, this term went and kind of what I was thinking was that there were some committees that seemed to have these huge backlogs that just kept growing and growing. And it was kind of striking, like, you know, if we're just doing our reports on committees, there'd be this lengthy, like, oh, we've got this, this, and this.
Twenty minutes, almost.
And I needed another 90-day extension on this thing that we haven't really even started talking about and, and so on. And then, you know, you get to some of these other committees, it's like, well, I've got no report, we have nothing on our agenda. And obviously, I completely get that there is a value in having not the exact same amount of workload on every committee because some folks are more available than others. But I did think that there's a couple changes that we could make to sort of the scopes of the committees that would allow them to basically continue, that would allow them to be, to be sort of largely the same. It would distribute the work out a little bit more evenly. And it would also, I think, in some cases, where there's been maybe some... Pencil? Here, I've got stuff. Yeah, so the idea is, you know, it wasn't necessarily to completely even out the workload, but to sort of shift things around a little bit, to take some pressure off of ordinance in particular, and to, I think, maybe align things in a way that sort of fits people's skill sets and interests. So with that preamble, here's basically my current proposition. The first part is ordinance is basically getting split into two, getting split in two. Everything related to zoning is its own committee. So basically, we're taking out of ordinance, we're creating a new committee that's just handling the zoning stuff. The reason why I wanted to split that out is that I spoke to a couple of you guys, but it seemed like zoning was the thing because of the, how you have to very carefully work with the planning department, the planning board, which requires multiple public hearings. That is some of the most time-consuming work. And so I thought, okay, so we split that off. Then from public safety, the street acceptance and utility easements, the idea is that those get moved over to property, which to me kind of makes sense because that really does have to do with public property. And then, in order to make sure that there's still six committees, that we take what's left of ordinance, so everything in ordinance that isn't zoning, and everything that's still in public safety, and we merge those together. I also thought that that would be useful because I know there was a few points in the course of this term where there was questions about, should this really go to ordinance or public safety? Because it is an ordinance, but it kind of has to deal with public safety. So I thought that consolidating those two would sort of clear up some of that jurisdictional ambiguity. And then we're here with, with six committees with slightly more balanced workloads. So that was my proposal.
I think...
Yeah, one more thing. So finance, appointments, and rules basically don't change.
The other thing I would say is the bottom line is ordinances by their nature take the most time.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about trying to find a balance of that workload.
Yes.
The ordinance committee has to be right because those are laws, they have to be done right.
Right.
And they, they take time because, as you said, zoning ordinances take time because they have to go to, not only do they have to be reviewed by all ordinances, they have to be reviewed by the attorney, but they also have to go to the area planning department. So you have a lot of different things that, that happen to ordinance committee that you could pull out. I like that we've assigned stuff to public safety this year. I would take on, and finance, and we've done, don't think we've done, is pay plan ordinances, but if there's a financial ordinance of some kind, I don't see why that could be done. My thinking right now is, this isn't a bad idea, but if we kept it the same, give the president the authority to request that property takes zoning this time. Charter only says that you have to have a committee reviewing. You don't have to have the appropriate standing committee, doesn't matter what that is.
Yep.
Which is why we can send them there if we want. In the history of this, there is truth to the fact that sometimes some of our other committees don't have appointments as appointments, they don't have a lot, but if those members...
Sometimes there are a lot of appointments.
Yeah, next time.
But you, right, right, right.
Twenty-five.
And you made it a better committee by virtue of what you've done, I'm sure, but...
But usually it's...
One Z, two Z.
Yeah, it's generally pretty, and you can do it, you can do it for the...
Right. And just to reiterate...
And it makes it, you know, one night.
And just to reiterate, my whole idea here is not that all the committees should have an equal workload because, you know, Joe, me and Joe met about this once already, and he, he really felt that it was important to point out that people have different lives and they have different workloads and, you know, I know, yes, some, they get into a...
Am I right?
No, sorry. You know, if there's, if there's a kind of a busy point in someone's life, they might want some committees that aren't super, super busy. I do think that this clears up some, some ambiguity, and I think, I do think the only way, you're absolutely right that we could just send stuff to different committees, you know, as needed. I do think that when you're, when people are requesting their committees and when a future president is making appointments to committees, there, there has to be some consideration about skill sets and interests.
That's usually the case.
And, and I think that these, like, for instance, I think that zoning might sometimes require a different skill set than other types of ordinances.
Well, that's true, but let me say this. I don't really agree with the notion that somebody has a life that makes it, that they're too busy to do some committees. If you want to be on the council, you do the work. I can't allow that to be a reason, like, I wouldn't want a president, a future president to call somebody and say, hey, are you, can you do these committees? Are you gonna be too busy? And that, to me, is not fair.
Well, okay, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just reiterating what, what Joe had said to me.
Well, I just don't agree with that.
Okay.
I think, I think you spread the workload around, let's say, if, and I think what I've been president, Joseph been president, we were, I was vice president with him, and we made decisions based on, if we put so-and-so on an appointments committee, they're not that busy, we should put them on a committee that's more busy because everyone's gonna get two committees.
Balance out.
Balance it out. And I think that workload works.
And I, yeah.
I don't know, I, the other thing I was mentioning to Omar is if, principled zoning, Salem was big time on cannabis, and it was cannabis zoning. If we move that, if, if we decided to put that particular item into property committee or the new committee, he might object to that because he wanted to be involved unless he was also the chair of his zoning committee. So, I don't know, I wonder if we shouldn't just let the president suggest it and let the president decide and make it known that this should happen? But on the other hand, I, I don't disagree with trying to do something here.
I mean, I think if we want to realign...
JP and, hey, you guys are good on ordinance and zoning. I mean, what do you think?
I've served on every committee by appointments. So I've had the circuit, and I found that, I agree with Dan, that the assignments were made pretty much where they were needed. And in terms of the staff who served on the committee and whether, whoever was, the joy was present, everyone always put together according to interests and abilities, and they, you knew which committees that season was going to have the heavy workload. And although I like, I like the idea of maybe addressing it in advance, I'm not sure that it necessarily gets you where you want to be. And I really think you need to look at it on a case-by-case basis as the workload's coming in, and maybe it's the president, maybe it's the president and the vice president, maybe it's the entire council. Because we all vote to send a committee, and we all have the right to say, gee, no, I think this time we shouldn't send this one to this committee, but we should vote, we should send it to another committee. And so we all have that ability.
Right.
It isn't automatic that anything goes to one committee. And as you said, the charter doesn't call for one specific committee to survey anything specific.
Sure.
I like the notion of presidential leadership being able to do that.
And then the council either agrees or doesn't.
Okay, but the one thing I just want to say is that the, what you're, what you're saying is true, and whether or not we consider this doesn't preclude that.
With this, no.
Right.
That's the...
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, essentially what you are saying, except for the renaming of one committee, is just reallocating the kinds of work that committees do. The committees are largely the same, there's three that are untouched virtually, and then the other three kind of get shuffled according to the work that they do. And I agree that, that as you do this, you need to be cognizant of the fact of the skill sets and potential overlap of one issue to another, which we could have today, you know, things go to ordinance and sometimes end up in rules and come back. I, I think for me, the biggest differentiator is the ordinance of public safety versus zoning and economic development. Can you talk a little bit more about the functional differences you see in those two specific committees?
Sure. So there's basically, you know, as I went through and sort of said, that there's obviously exceptions and edge cases. For the most part, we've got three big documents that set all of the local rules. We've got our zoning ordinance, we've got our city ordinances, we've got our traffic rules and orders. Some city ordinance and some traffic rules and orders things are currently handled in ordinance, some of them are handled in public safety. Zoning is exclusively handled in ordinance. My thought was if you took those, if you basically expanded the, the role of the public safety committee to also include all of the ordinance stuff, all of the traffic rules and orders stuff, then you could basically have that one committee handle all of that stuff, which would be more, and then that would free up the other, the, what would remain within what's, what's currently ordinance would just be, just the zoning. It's not entirely uncommon for communities to have a zoning committee, by the way.
Yeah.
How much zoning have we done, though, as compared to other? I worry that the zoning and economic development committee will be a committee that only has an occasional thing on zoning.
Yeah, I mean, we've had cannabis.
We had the cannabis, which was big.
We had the pedal tavern thing.
No, that's, that was just an ordinance, that wasn't zoning.
Where else did we have?
There was the, the water fowl.
We get them, and they may be, I'm just looking at history.
Keeping chickens.
This might be something we could...
There was the zero lot lines.
Yep.
I don't know.
We can look at things like...
Smart, smart, smart growth, smart zoning before came on, was a big topic.
I know, but let's, what I would ask you to do, maybe if we want to just talk further about this, is ask Barbara, how many zoning ordinances came through in the last two terms and didn't versus regular ordinances? Now, when I said, upset with a couple times, we've done so much work this term with ordinances, I meant that we haven't done, you know this, we haven't done as many as we've done this, this term. I mean, with, with all of the passion that people have about getting things done, and the cannabis was a big thing, that was new, that was huge, and then we, we had other ones that are very important.
It's also...
It's, it's the kind of work, though, that will continue. If you split zoning up, let's say there was a zoning ordinance that was, was one you just smart growth, and you sent that, the president says, I'd like to send this to property, and calls Salem and says, Salem, do you mind, I want to send this to property, you got a lot of work. Calls JP, you want it? I see that as a possibility right there, as a way for the president to distribute workload where zoning and property isn't necessarily non-congruent, and I think you could do that. And if it's a huge thing and it's cannabis and Salem really wants to do it, I'm using these just because that's where we are in Salem and JP. I think that's the way to do it. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the zoning and economic development committee's gonna have a lot of work, that's what I'm worried about, and I think you're, though, I think you're right, we have a ordinance, we have a huge ordinance workload, and they take a long time. So I don't know, what do you think?
Is there another way to, we could write something? I hear what you're saying, that's where the workload is what you've seen, what you've seen. Again, a way to distribute it up is to have the president kind of do that.
Well, giving a courtesy to the chair of the committee to say, Omar, do you, do you want to take this public safety ordinance on? I think, even though it says ordinance in it, it's public safety related, or maybe there's a financial ordinance. Like, pay plan comes along, we have, we take it all the time. You know, so let's be taken, you know, even though it's an ordinance.
Okay, I just want to keep coming back to this point. We can do that, right? I mean, we, we can certainly, just like, at any point, we can be thoughtful, and in fact, we should always be doing this and should have always been doing this, to look and say, wow, the workload of this committee is pretty intense, maybe another committee should handle it. That's something that we could do, that's something we could also do if we realign. I mean, that doesn't, it doesn't, it isn't an either-or type thing.
I just want to send you a...
So what are we gonna, what are we gonna realign it if we can do that now?
Well...
So, I mean, I, I can understand what you're saying, but I really agree with Consular Risk about, I think it's a good idea to do the power, not the power, the opportunity to the president of the council to decide, like, you know, and these past two years have been really busy, ordinance have been really busy, but in the past was something like that, and we don't know if the future's gonna be like that. So programing the future ordinance...
Given that we have the same council, the future's gonna be like that.
You never know, never know. But if we have that power to do it now, and we're gonna have the power to do it after, we realign this, so I don't see the point to do it because we can do it now. And I, I think what we have to do is be conscious that some committees have a lot of stuff to do, and instead of keep sending stuff to those committees, they're really busy now, we should give the opportunity to the other committees to do stuff.
Okay.
And I, I would even say the Rules and Government Relations can do an ordinance, even if it has nothing to do with Rules and Government Relations.
Well, sure, and we can always handle those on a case-by-case basis, but when people ask for their committee assignments, and when, when a president is choosing people to be on various committees, one of the reasons that they're doing that, one of these factors in is what kind of stuff do you want to work on, right? So the idea is that you, of course, you can shift things around as needed, but ideally, the idea is like, if I, if I want to be in, if I, if I wanted to be in rules, the reason is because I'm interested in making rules, right? If we have to handle other stuff, we can, but the, the general sense is this, this is where things go, and in the last two years, what we've seen is that things tend to go to the committees that they're planning to go to regardless of sort of the workload. And the, the other thing is, there's, you learn skills working in these committees. I mean, I, we, we probably have a better sense of the city council rules than someone who's never served on rules, and you two probably have a much better sense of how city finance works than I do, having never served on finance. Like, you do, you learn, you acquire skill sets and subject matter familiarity serving on a committee.
The other compromise might be, if they want to move, just put zoning in property right now.
I don't think zoning should be in property, though.
Well, all I'm saying is...
Property is, is a committee that, for the most part, deals with city-owned property.
That's what it does not.
Right.
It doesn't change, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
We could call it property and zoning, we could, you know, what we're trying, what you shine the light on is that, let's look at how these things are distributed, and I think that's great. I mean, we should look at it. And if we change, if we're gonna call something zoning and economic development, we can say property zoning and economic development. I mean, we can do that if it, if it makes sense. I don't know, I just think that, I, I kind of agree with Omar, it's hard for me to make these changes when we can distribute things. I mean, I don't want to, I don't know, it's hard. I don't want to seem like I'm, because I've been around a long time, that I don't want to make a change. I think I've been hoping to change, it's just that I, I wonder if these changes will actually help us. I really think the zoning and economic development committee is gonna have a lot of work.
I mean...
Unless we have, maybe we can ask Jeff as well, is zoning coming down by your opinion?
Well, I mean...
I think there's, to your point, I think there is value in evaluating how much work went to all these committees over the last couple of terms, just to get the data, and how they may have otherwise fit into here.
Yeah, so I tried to get that data, and you can look at all the agendas and even the minutes. It's hard to aggregate that in a way without spending hundreds of hours on it, but...
Really?
Dude.
I mean, I mean, how do you, how do you do that, right? Like, I mean, because I can say, somebody can sit on ordinance's agenda for six months, and that doesn't necessarily mean that it was discussed at every...
All you have to do, in my opinion, is ask Barbara to send you the ordinance, this is the thing...
What is the workload?
Of ordinance?
Doesn't matter how often they talked about it, how many things were thrown their way?
And all you have to do is get their agendas for the next last two, four years, just get their agendas. You can see how many items and how long they was...
And just tick marks.
You know, and, and that tells you, that gives us some data anyway.
It gives you some data, but I think, really, if you go back 10 years, you really get a sense of the city and how much workload has been distributed to the various committees. I think you need a longer period, a couple of terms.
Well, I would dispute that because I think we have evolved, and early on, there may have been a whole lot of stuff we had to string out from an ordinance perspective, and now we're in a cadence where it's maybe not as frenetic as it was 10 years ago.
The other thing, that's...
And we don't even know for sure that, like, as Omar said, that what is currently, what's currently busy is what's gonna be busy forever. I really didn't, although I did purposefully try and break up ordinance to make that a little bit easier, I didn't largely do this with the intention of evenly distributing the workload. What I did try and do is align it with the sort of interests and skill sets that counselors might have.
Well, the other thing I have to tell you is, you created a new committee, ordinance of public safety. That's gonna have a hell of a lot of work. If you just combine the two agendas of their committees right now, in other words, maybe at the beginning of next term, we're gonna have to move things out of there. But that committee, if you put the two of them together, would have a lot, maybe the utilities...
How about zoning and appointments? That could be the new committee.
Well, no, I mean, my thought is that public safety, if you take out of public safety right now all of the street acceptance and all the utility requests...
Publics and property, yeah.
Then, I mean, right now, most of what's in the agenda is sort of discussions about, I mean, from my observation, it's mostly discussions about various traffic issues, but there's, in terms of like, measures that are moving, like, defined measures that are moving through...
What do you say, Omar?
I agree and disagree. I agree that, that we are, that we are doing that now, but that is something that we have to keep doing. In the future, with the new president, instead of the street acceptance, instead of sending it to public safety, we can send it to property.
Well, I think...
Without, without any alignment again, so it's same way...
We could redefine the current committees by adding the word "public utilities" to property.
To property.
I mean, that would help, that would help a lot. That would move stuff out of public safety.
Instead of sending that...
And any public safety ordinance, related ordinance, you know, there's a lot of them, traffic rules and orders or public safety, they're ordinances.
Yep.
They could go to public safety, that would help with ordinance right there.
Okay, but right now, what I am saying is that in our rules, right now, it says that street acceptance and utility requests should go. We don't have to always listen to that, but it might, if that's something that we want to do to rebalance workloads, we might want to just say...
Well, this is why I think your little chart here works, because we could move it, and then we'll change the rules. We should recommend a rule change to do that.
There's also a, a theory, that is mine, that you could create some sort of a mapping that said, keep these three here, keep these six here, but if you would have otherwise sent it to public safety, you now could send it to its sister committee, which is ordinance or whatever. And there could be an alignment in the universe that things, certain things in property, that if they, if they get really busy, some of those things could move over to public safety, vice versa. Like, those two committees and those two things would be prioritized to be moved if the agendas got really big.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, street acceptance, that could be moved to property if your agenda got too big and property had some...
Okay.
But we could, but I, I also think I understand what you're saying, too. Someone wants to see what's property gonna do. We could change the rules and say, all right, all utility requests are now gonna go to property. We can put that in, what is the purpose of this committee, so when Lindsey, but when all the new counselors get, they can see what's going on. I think we could make those changes.
Okay.
As a compromise, I think that would work.
So, so let's, let's take this one...
But I'm also saying that...
You don't like this...
We could put zoning in zoning, well, I kind of feel like...
That's fine. Let me, let me set this back a minute. Do we generally agree that it would be sensible to send the street acceptance and the utility request to property?
Are you okay with that?
I don't, I'm happy with...
I'm okay with it.
Pretty much any committee, I mean, any, as a general course of action, I don't see any issues.
Okay.
So if we put traffic here...
Well, that's really, it is not traffic, it's the utilities...
Utilities and streets.
Okay. So if you guys don't want to do zoning, how about this? What if we just made it clear then that anything related to traffic or any sort of ordinance is about sort of public, like, so for instance, like...
Public safety ordinance.
Like, like, any sort of, any sort of ordinance that could theoretically be construed to have to do with public safety or traffic should always go to public safety if, like, I mean, not always, but as a matter of course, should do that. That way, so like, all that bike path stuff could have gone to public safety.
The pedal tavern?
Yeah, pedal tavern stuff could have gone to public safety.
Happy to give that to you.
The, the public consumption of alcohol and cannabis stuff...
Yeah, related to public safety.
Could have gone to public safety. And just doing that, I mean, I could live...
That will have to...
That would, that would free up ordinance a good deal, we could...
The other thing I wanted to say, too, something I just thought of, let's say we have suddenly have this huge cannabis zoning ordinance.
Uh-huh.
I have it huge.
Yeah.
And ordinance has this huge backlog of things already on the plate. President can say, I want to create a standing, a special committee on this zoning.
Yeah.
Guess for that. You work on this, when it's done, it's done.
Yep.
And that way, and it could be, anybody want to be on this? Otherwise, I'll assign.
Right, right, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And that's a way to take, if there's suddenly a huge workload on ordinance, let's create a standing...
Carve one out.
A special committee that deals with zoning.
Yep.
We could have that committee, we could have a seventh committee, but I don't think it's necessary, it depends on the load.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
So many ordinance do take time, and you know, I haven't been on it, that's what you can, you guys both have been on.
We were busy.
You guys get busy with those things.
It was a busy couple days.
And when you start dealing with very complicated ordinances that, like the fair wage thing, that could... that require a tremendous amount of city attorney of time and it's necessary. So you're going to have, all I'm getting at is it's going to take time. It's got to go to him, come back to you. Okay, all right.
Okay, so.
A standing committee could, a special committee could create an ad hoc.
Yeah, and that at times probably will be necessary. Okay, so I think, I like this feedback. I think I can rework this.
Create new rules on the purpose of committees with public safety and property making those minor changes.
I'll take some stuff.
Can you do it in such a way, and this is just my weird project management brain coming in, but can you do it in such a way that there are certain topics that can span committees? You know what I'm saying? Like.
I'm happy to collaborate with you on that and get your thoughts.
I mean, it can be primary to one and secondary to another.
In rule 11, the overall rule that starts, it says it. Maybe we could say each committee, committees, the standing committees are responsible. There is the possibility that certain items like zoning and other items may be sent to different committees when necessary.
In this order.
And you could write something.
Well, it might depend on like the, that's the one, the prescriptive is the thing. Because it might be a case where there's this one year where, okay, like rules has a bunch of people who actually have really good knowledge of this. So even though it doesn't make sense to send it to rules, like they're not, these guys aren't doing anything. So.
I don't know. I don't see the, we had this big comment about resolutions. And I thought we were done after the Roe one. And now we have the Medicare one. Well, that didn't work. I guess all those statements didn't work.
That was already.
We're going to be busy. I don't think rules is going to not be busy, but anyway.
So.
Why don't we do that?
Can I basically walk this back, take a chance to rewrite, rewrite it and send you guys? And then we'll take another stand with this.
One more meeting to finish it. And then I would suggest the last being in December, we finalize it. So the next council has.
One way or the other, yeah.
We have to finalize something because the next council has to know what, you know, what is the rule.
Exactly. If we can't come to a thing that everyone's pretty happy with by the end of December, then. Yeah, I mean, I think.
Especially if you feel you're okay with those changes. You are. You're already doing them.
Then I think that we can probably do that. But if for whatever reason we can't come to something we're all happy with by the end of December, I'll probably punt this for two years and try it again.
Well, I would, I would think that why, because you've put a spotlight on this, the next president.
If they didn't have the Roe resolution, this would be done.
Yep, and the five other resolutions. Thanks, guys.
I think you're not bitter.
You know what? I'm the only one here who had, no, Omar's good.
I was just going to say that I think, I see a, certainly the connection between zoning and property. And that might, it might be, although you're dealing with tangibles, real estate and vehicles and other items of capital property, you are dealing with zoning. There are issues with zoning for property purposes, for certain uses, types, occupancies, whatever. There are connections there. And I like your idea of taking and running the roads and putting, which could assist.
But maybe it's only in our head.
Which could assist the next president.
Yeah, maybe it's only in our head. And it doesn't have to be codified, but it could be a guide.
I wouldn't mind you changing the title of the property to property of public utilities because that does, doesn't that do it? I mean, that's what it will be. You're going to get, you're going to get utilities. In other words, this description you have here is exactly what we would do now.
Right. And a lot of this could be me just sort of copying and pasting stuff across. I tried to just do that to like just copy and paste the thing, like cut and paste like items from the various descriptions. PowerPoint. But, but one thing that I found is our, like, our committee, like the parts in the rules that describe the committees were very clearly written by different people.
All of it, actually what that happened was the chairs of the committees.
Some are extremely detailed.
Some are really, really detailed. And some of them are like, like the, one thing I had trouble with was in public safety. It's like, public safety deals with stuff with like the fire, police. It's like, well, what kind of stuff? Not their budgets, right?
Who was chair? That was Dan Carey.
Did that committee get formed under him?
No.
But we did the write-ups.
Oh, okay.
We wanted to do the write-ups at the beginning of the term. So what, that points out, why don't we have you and Omar get together and rewrite them? If you think they need rewriting, not to change what they do so much as also to rewrite them.
So I'll try and do that. And I'll try and just send things out to the various chairs and see where people are. And we'll try and, we'll try to do this one more time and get it hammered out. It'd be nice to get Salem's included, maybe Jones as well. Yeah, I don't know.
Hey, what, when do you want to meet again? Because we have a second meeting tomorrow.
Oh, yes, since we're meeting today. That's a good question.
Well, I found out that all the committees in the entire city are meeting on the 26th. My finance meeting has to meet upstairs in the conference room.
Every committee is meeting on the 26th? I'm not meeting on the 26th.
Ordinance is on the 26th. Well, you never meet, appointments doesn't have anything to do.
What if we try?
We get 25 coming up.
Well, anyway, there was no rooms available. I'm not talking about you. There's little committees.
I'm just taking a guess here that the week of Thanksgiving is going to be tough for people.
I would say the second would be a good day.
The second is, how about the third? Because the second's going to.
Yeah, the third is better because the second is my favorite.
Second is also the telecom.
So why don't we do the third meeting?
Okay.
Six here?
Well, it may not be here because the state.
Be where it is.
Ordinance usually meets here at 5:00 or 5:15, don't they? Because they are.
We're not talking about the 26th.
I know, I'm saying on the 3rd. Oh, no, maybe it won't be meeting. Because that's a week.
I have no meetings on the 3rd. We're not meeting on the 3rd.
Also.
So that's my meeting.
Public safety?
Yeah, that's the first Saturday. Six.
Six?
Well, we can move it to seven.
Can we?
Probably for coastal or beach, it's better to move it to seven, seven.
Oh, okay.
We can move it to seven.
I want it to six?
Great.
This meeting?
Okay.
I know.
If that works for you, then that works for me.
Okay.
We might just want to schedule those in different rooms just in case there's an overlap.
6 o'clock on the third for this meeting. But in the meantime, you're going to send out new, just take the existing rules of the committees and change them.
Yeah. And anyone who is a committee chair who wants to weigh in with me about what, about the current language in any way, I'm happy to get that.
Well, that would be a good email to send out.
Yeah.
We have four of us right here. What, five? Salem's the only one we need.
Right.
So just tell Salem if you want to.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We have all the, okay. Yeah, so everyone, if you guys wouldn't mind doing me a favor, just looking at your own language and the rules, even the committees that we're not talking about shifting anything around. And just saying like, is this an actual fair description of what's going on?
Actually, that points out to something. The appointments committee, what you've done for it, if we can codify that in some way, I like what you've done. I mean, the fact that, you know, you actually look at the people.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Novel approach, I meant.
Novel is the correct approach.
So.
I mean, like codifying that, you would, you would hope you were contacted the chairman of that committee to tell you how that reappointment.
Yeah, yeah. I'm with you. I get it.
Okay, we could, would you move me to?
Second floor.
I was going to the other end.
Yep.
Well, we're not doing.